Thank you, and I'll call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order at 7:07 PM. We'll take a moment of silence to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Coordinator call the roll.
Mr. Dixon?
Here.
Mr. Rollins? Mr. Scirrano?
Here.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Here.
Mr. Segal?
Here.
Mr. Connor?
Here.
Mr. Escobedo?
Here.
With six present, one absent, we have a quorum.
Before we go any further, I'd like to thank the gentlemen in the back of the room, back behind there, Rod and Connor, who are working behind the scenes to produce the broadcast for Channel 20 of tonight's meeting. So, thank you, gentlemen. We'll now move on to have our section on recognizing and celebrating outstanding contributions of our students and staff, Mr. Earl Dotson, Jr.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Board members. We are always, always happy when we have student athletes amongst us, along with their families and their coaches and principals, so always a good thing. Tonight, we are going to recognize some outstanding student athletes from across countries, some state competitors. Five RPS 205 students made it downstate to compete in the IESA State Cross Country Race in Normal. Thurgood Marshall Schools' Michaela Durkin and E. Katerina Dmitrieva
Very good.
competed in the girls' Class 2A race. And Marshall's Nino Fulbright competed in the boys' Class 2A race. In Class 3A, Maria Montessori's Madison Harmson and Flynn Middle Schools' Michelle Gazman competed in the girls' -- competed in the girls' race. Congratulations. In girls' golf, Lincoln Middle Schools' Isabella Peterson took fourth place in the IESA State Girls Golf Tournament in Peoria. And Eisenhower Middle Schools' Kayla Saleen took fifth. The girls were divided by only one stroke. This is girls' golf, by the way. Isabella shot a 75, while Kayla shot a 76. At the high school level, Guilford High Schools' Caitlin Saleen represented the RPS 205 Golf Co-op at the IHSA Girls State Finals in Decatur. Congratulations. And last but certainly not least, girls' tennis. Five RPS 205 students, four sophomores, and a junior qualified to compete in the IHSA State Class 2A Girls Tennis Tournament in Buffalo Grove. Auburn's Baylen Nevenhoven won the singles title at sectionals, while Auburn's Paris Thompson took third. And Guilford's Casey Alcott took fourth. All qualifying for state. In doubles play, Melanie Martinovic and Fong Pham took third place at sectionals to qualify for the state tournament. Auburn's Baylen Nevenhoven found the most success at state. She easily won her first three rounds and her quarterfinal match before falling in three sets in the semifinals. Baylen ultimately went on to a fourth-place finish in the tournament. According to the Register Star, she's only the seventh local state girls' tennis medalist in history. And she's only a sophomore. Congratulations. We certainly have some of these student athletes who are here with us this evening, so please join me in giving them a round of applause for their performance.
Congratulations, great job. Wonderful. Great job. Congratulations.
Watching you run this show. Congratulations.
Congratulations, great job.
Congratulations.
Watching you run this show. I can tell, aren't you?
Congratulations.
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 Good job. There you go. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Very proud of her.
Congratulations.
And thank you to all those parents out there, too.
What a great segue, Mr. President. Additionally, I would also like to take a moment to thank all of the families and parents and grandparents and loved ones who support them. Please give them a round of applause as well. Additionally, I know I saw Candace Collins, Jen Parker, some principals who are here, so thank you for your support. Let's give them a round of applause as well. And certainly, I know there's some coaches in the building. Where you at, coaches? There you are.
That'd be a good idea.
Thank you, thank you very much. Additionally, I do have one resolution that I would like to read. You may have known this, or maybe you did not. But your school board president was thinking about our board members. School Board Members Day is November 15th. You are, you did you know that?
Thursday.
That's Thursday. So, the proclamation reads, "Whereas, school board members are elected to sit in trust for their diverse communities and in that capacity are charged with meeting the community's expectations and aspirations for the public education of their children. And whereas, school board members are entrusted with the guardianship and wise expenditure of scarce tax dollars, and they are responsible for maintaining and preserving the buildings, grounds, and other areas of the school district that the community has put in their trust. And whereas, school board members are responsible for providing leadership that ensures a clear, shared vision of public education for their schools, that sets high standards for the education of all students, and requires the effective and efficient operation of their districts. And whereas, school board members adopt public policy to give voice to that leadership and employ a superintendent to administer board policy, and are also responsible for the regular monitoring of the district's performance and compliance with state policy. And whereas, school board members selflessly volunteer countless hours to public service with no compensation. And whereas, employers are supportive of their employees who serve as school board members generously lending support and time. Employers give their employees the opportunity to better serve the needs of the school districts and communities they represent through sometimes tremendous sacrifice to the employer. And whereas, decisions made by school board members directly impact the quality of life in their communities, placing them as the front line of American democracy. Therefore, be it resolved by RPS 205 that we proclaim November 15th, 2018, as School Board Members Day here in Rockford, Illinois, as a way to honor those citizens who devote their time and energy for the successful education of our children.
About that, huh?
Round of applause. Thank you, then.
Great job, Merle. Okay. Yes, Ms. McCulloch.
Before you all leave, because you get to leave right after this if you choose to. You know, it's really important to me, and I appreciate that you've taken that on. Having been a parent, having been a coach, having been, you know, a volunteer in the school system, that not only that we appreciate everything your parents and coaches do to support you athletes, because we do know all the work that you put in, but it takes the whole team to move you forward. So, it's not enough for us to just say thank you to them. I hope that you athletes also recognize all that assistance, support, love, and show gratitude to the people who have helped you along the way. So, and thank you all for being here. And we don't get compensated monetarily, but when we get to recognize outstanding students in whatever way they achieve, whether it's academic, or if it's in sports, robotics, anything that they do, that is compensation for us, because that's what we want to see is kids moving forward and really making the most of their life and their time in our school district. So, thank you for being here.
Well said. Okay, we'll move on. Mr. Segal, you have a comment?
Sorry, I've always got something to say.
Okay.
I was completely unaware that there was such a thing as a School Board Members Day, but I do want to acknowledge two groups, one who was mentioned by Earl. But it has been actually a remarkable endeavor for me to sit with these board members up here and to deliberate public education, a subject that's very dear to me. It is really humbling to be able to speak with really, really smart people who share that same interest and passion for public education. And also, it really shouldn't be overlooked, the lengths that employers sometimes have to go to to accommodate school board members. My own employer has been very generous with time and accommodations, sometimes letting me leave last minute to go deal with something. And I'm very grateful for that. And Tom, if you're listening, I'd like to leave an hour early tomorrow for the meeting. I do have one other comment to make. Last week's committee of the whole meeting, I went on kind of a rant about the multitude of issues that need to be addressed in order to move student achievement and growth. And I do believe all of that to be true. There are tons and tons of issues that need to be addressed, lots of heavy pressures that make it difficult for students to achieve. But I was reminded that just the day before, so a week ago, Monday, the public schools of Robeson County, North Carolina, went back to school for their second first day of the year. Their schools closed on September 11th because of a hurricane. So, from September 11th until November 3rd and 5th, their schools were closed. Twenty-three thousand-plus students with an economic condition in their community that looks a lot like Rockford's. Can you imagine conversations that they're having? They have a lot of academic performance issues there, too. I think we ought to at least count this one blessing, that we don't have to fight Mother Nature in order to address our own achievement issues. Something that I guess I've, this last week, I've been feeling particularly grateful for, especially as I look around the country and see just how vulnerable so many other places are. And California, I'm looking at you.
Sure. Thank you, David. Okay, we will move on to the petitions and communications portion of our meeting. When we invite the public to make comments, the First Amendment of the United States Constitution guarantees the rights of citizens to petition their government, as well as provides for freedom of speech. Also, the Illinois School Code requires that there be a time at regular and special meetings for public comment. Thus, we are following those mandates during this petitions and communications portion. According to our board policy 2.230, the public comments portion of the meeting is limited to a total of 30 minutes. The board will not respond to comments at this time. If it's appropriate, you'll be contacted in a timely manner by staff in response to your questions. In order to allow for sufficient time for the business of the board and conduct our meeting in an efficient and effective manner, we are requesting that you comply with the guidelines that are posted, and each speaker will be allowed no more than two minutes to address the board. It's not appropriate to address individual board members or individual administrators, or discuss matters that would otherwise be confidential in such open meetings. We only have one speaker tonight, but there is a clock on the wall to help you with your two minutes. And we appreciate your interest and your cooperation with our guidelines. So, our one speaker tonight is Kirsten Eland, I believe that's correct. And I'll have you, if you hit the button for the microphone up there.
How you doing?
Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. I have a question or whatnot about the registration fees. This is new to me. I'm a single father here. I just got my daughter last year. And we didn't receive anything last year, and whenever I enrolled her, they didn't say anything specifically about the registration fee. With me being a tax-paying citizen, why am I paying registration fees for public schooling? And I would like to know, what are the registration fees going for? If the school, if the schools doesn't allow the students to bring books home so the parents can further the education? And if we have to pay registration fees, why do, why are we, why are we as parents, we have to send our children to a certain school in that school zone? If we're paying registration fees, why can't we send them to any school in the district? That's all that I have.
We will have someone follow up with you, then. Thank you for being here, okay? All right. I'll open the floor to any board member comments. Mr. Connor?
So, this is belated, but to honor our veterans, it was on November 11th. And every year, as some of you know, I, of course, always wear my flag tie for flag events. So, thank you to all the veterans. And I know if I remember correctly from the past, that Mr. Dotson was in the Navy and Mr. Rollins was in the Army. So, I want to thank them and all those that served. And if I might say, on a personal note, my son was serving from 2001 to 2005 in the United States Marines, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other board member comments? I have one, so I just want to thank Mr. Segal, who spent three hours with me on Friday at the Ready to Learn Pilot Team Kickoff, which is the Erickson Institute Project that Heidi and Anisha are co-chairing. And the exciting thing for me was that there were 40 to 50 people in the room, and it varied from educators to community service, non-for-profits. Many of the private schools were there as well, had representation. Police Department, other city officials, the newspaper were there. So, we have started the work of rolling out the project that our board approved the funding for, that will have teacher, kindergarten teachers throughout the city, and our district interview, our survey. There's kindergarten students in five categories. That actually will be in the middle to the end of January when that survey is done. And the data will be back, I believe, about May. And then we'll kind of be cleaned up and all that. And so then we'll come back and have heat maps and all that kind of good stuff to know where the gaps are in those five key areas to help the community figure out where resources might be needed for various different things. So, very exciting, very engaged group of people. So, thank you to Heidi and Anisha from Alignment Rockford, David Sidney, and others who got, were involved in that process. REA was there, too, right? So, thank you for all being there. So, it was really fun. Ms. McCulloch?
Oh, I'm just going to respond to Mike, because I get to be a proud mama. My son was just promoted to captain this week, and he's in the Army, so since we're recognized.
Okay.
Okay. Board member again.
Any other board member comments? Okay, if not, we'll move on, then, to me turning the page. We are now in the consent portion of our agenda, including the following items, the meeting minutes from October 23rd, 2018, payroll, accounts payable, purchase orders, construction bid request log, contracts under $10,000, and travel, the bid recommendations for window replacement at Froberg and Hillman Elementary Schools, the recurring contract for, contracts for insurance plan administrator renewal, and the Cumberland Stepping Stones Group contracted teacher, the other consent items, including the workers' compensation settlement agreement for MK, resolution abating the tax, heretofore levied for the year 2018 to pay debt service on taxable general obligation school bonds, and the Freedom of Information Law. Is there a motion and a second to approve these consent items?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Segal. Any items that board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? Mr. Segal?
8A.
Okay. Any others? Mr. Escobedo?
7A.
7A, okay. Okay, I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the consent items not pulled.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Scirrano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yeah, it is.
Yes. Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
The motion passes as six yeses, one absent.
Thank you. I'll now take a motion for the approval of Item 7A, which is the meeting minutes from October 23rd.
So moved.
Move by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Segal. Any question or discussion? Seeing none, I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of the meeting minutes for October 23rd.
Mr. Scirrano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Stain.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
The motion passes as five yeses, one absent, one abstain.
Thank you. And I'll take a motion for the approval of the bid recommendation, Item 8A, which is the window replacement at Froberg and Hillman.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Segal. Any question or discussion? Segal?
I just wanted to highlight this particular piece, because it does show really good thought that went into getting this done. And this is a project that was awarded and will spend about $100,000 less than what we had budgeted for. It does involve multiple vendors, but the work that goes into getting this done and with a sharp eye towards saving money is something that I think should be recognized. So, thank you, good work.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion? Now I'll have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of Item 8A, the window replacement.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Scirrano?
Yes.
The motion passes as six yeses, one absent.
We are now at the closed session consent agenda items, including the following. The HR organizational report and addendum, and the student discipline, unless otherwise modified below, the board adopts and accepts the hearing officer's findings and recommendations in the following cases in which students expelled or suspended are prohibited from being on school grounds and school-sponsored activities without the prior written permission of the principal. Student 4219, 4222, 4223, and 4225 are expelled for the remainder of this 18-19 school year. Student 4220 is expelled for the remainder of the 18-19 school year through the first semester of the 19-20 school year. Student 4224 and 4226, the expulsions are held in abeyance contingent upon an EIA agreement for the remainder of this school year. And, we've got a long list of other EIA's, so bear with me. I've got to read through these, and I might need a throat lizen by the time I'm done. Student 10, 1027, 1028, 1029, 1030. Student 3637, 3638, 3639, 3640. Student 3641, 3642, 3643, 3644, 3645, 3646, 3647, 3648, 3649, 3650. Student 3651, 3652, 3653, 3655, 3656, 3657, 3658, 3659, 3660. Student 3661, 3662, 3663, 3664, 3665, 3667, 3668, 3669, 3670. And student 3671, 3672, 3673, 3674, 3676, 3677, 3678, 3679, and student 3680. Is there a motion and a second to approve the closed session consent item?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Segal. Are there any items that board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? Seeing none, I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of the closed session consent items. Thank you.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo? Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Scirrano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
The motion passes as six yeses, one absent.
Thank you. We'll now move on to our next agenda item, which is the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Jarrett?
I do not have a scheduled report this evening, but I did want to take the time to follow up on Mr. Dotson, Jr.'s very powerful rendition and just offer my own personal thank you to our board. This is a board that puts in incredible extra amounts of time that our administrative team gets a chance to see first and foremost. They are very, very dedicated. They always come to the meetings prepared, and they are very, very focused on improving outcomes for our students and having a first-choice school district for our community. So, on behalf of our administration team, our administrative team, and me personally, I want to express my personal gratitude for your service and for the excellent leadership you provide. So, thanks again.
Okay. We will, Ms. McCulloch?
Well, Dr. Jarrett, now that you mentioned Earl Dotson, Jr.'s presentation, you have to hear his interview on the podcasts for the Vibe, because he's so smooth. We're fortunate, I mean, he's going to be drawn away to some radio station somewhere. I don't know. What a beautiful job you do, John, with that. And your comment about his, comment about us is the same, so thanks. Your voice is smooth.
Okay, we'll move on, then, to the action items for tonight. 15A is the donation from the class of 1953 ERABs. Is there a motion and a second to approve this item?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Segal. Any questions or discussion? Okay. Seeing none, I'll have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of this donation.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo? Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Scirrano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
The motion passes as six yeses, one absent.
Our second action item tonight is the Illinois Association for School Administrators. Is there a motion and a second to approve this item, 15B?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Segal. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll have the coordinator then, oh, Mr. Dixon?
I see that it was $4,000, but now it's $10,000. Maybe I missed something. Explain that to me.
So, this contract is $4,000, which normally would not be brought to the board, but previous contracts trigger the total amount over $10,000. That's what I bring to your attention.
Any other? Okay, I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of Illinois Association of School Administrators.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Scirrano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
The motion passes as six yeses, one absent.
Okay, our next item is the intergovernmental agreement with the Rockford Park District on the tax abatement. Is there a motion and a second to approve this item?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Segal. Any questions or discussion? Mr. Connor?
First, we had a good discussion on this, and obviously, this is important for the community. But I want to reemphasize for the public, if you haven't read it, we are foregoing $37,500 in tax abatement. And there was a number of questions about the relationships that would continue as part of, if you will, the rewards for various reading programs. And there was an assurance by the Park District that this would continue, so we appreciate that. But we are the largest taxing district in Winnebago County, and so, from my point of view, this is a big deal. And we are foregoing this because we are in support of the community, and we want to support other bodies, including the Park District. And that's why I'm in favor of this.
Thank you. Any other comments? Now I'll have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of the intergovernmental agreement with the Park District.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Scirrano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch? Mrs. McCullough? Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
The motion passes as six yeses, one absent.
Thank you. Our next action item is the Reading Horizons Elevate Pilot that was presented at our last meeting. Is there a motion and a second to approve this item?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Mr. Segal. Any discussion or questions? Now I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of the Reading Horizons Elevate Pilot.
Mr. Scovano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
The motion passes as six yeses, one absent.
Thank you. We're now on to new business, and Dr. Wolf is here, I believe, there he is, to present the next item on 21st Century Community Learning Centers Model: Extended-Day Programming.
Thank you. I don't know if I can do the whole proclaim thing, but we really do believe that this program that we're adding into the already existing after-school program that you approved previously this year for RISA students is beneficial. We are working with a professor from NIU to use portable Makerspace equipment in a pilot project to see what we can do for students using that type of equipment to advance their interest in STEM. The total cost, including materials, supplies, and staffing, is $18,802 and would be funded by Title I grant funds.
Any questions for Dr. Wolf? Mr. Segal.
There probably should be board member approval of the quality of the Makerspace tools, and I would volunteer to come down and play with them to make sure that they meet our stringent requirements.
I second it.
We'll give you the schedule.
Okay. We'll give you the schedule.
I'll be there, I promise. It looks like fun. The 21st Century Community Learning Center is a pretty tremendous opportunity to extend exposure to our students in a learning environment that I think is going to be really helpful to them with school. I guess if there were one thing that I would truly love to see is evidence that there is something alignable with the rest of the district's efforts towards closing the achievement gap. How does this line up with, you know, these goals that are very student-centric? And how do we get the delivery of this extra time to match up to those student goals? It does seem like the various programs that are offered do provide a lot of great opportunities, but man, when we're talking about getting this in front of 2,100 students, I'm guessing a pretty fair number of those students would also greatly benefit from spending this time mastering their literacy and numeracy as well. And I know that there is all sorts of governmental reporting requirements, but if those requirements are as loose as how we end up reporting actual participation, it seems like there would be some flexibility in those reporting so that we can have programs that are reliable to our students' needs and would also meet the federal government guidelines. And I guess, and I closed off the PDSA that had this in really big text, and I'm too blind to really read it. I also wanted to ask about the difference in the participation reporting. It looks like there are two standards. You know, one suggests that there's like 48% of middle school students that will participate based on government standards, and by local standards, it's about 1%. Can you give me the actual number of students at elementary, middle, and high school that will participate, that make up these 2,100 kids?
I can certainly get that for you. I'd want to get it in writing so that I was exact. The federal government has a lower attendance rate than we do for regular attendance purposes. We have a higher standard. Certainly, elementary schools have a higher regular attendee rate than middle and high school. At the middle and high school levels, we're working around other extra and co-curricular activities, and it seems that students have more input, the older they get with their parents, than at the elementary level. But let me pull all of that, and we'll get that perhaps in a board update so that you have it exactly.
I do understand that with the middle and high schoolers having other things that can take up that time, but if they're, do I understand that, or is it, has there been some effort to make this 21st Century Community Learning Center alignable to those student goals and then put some emphasis on the students to make them realize that's the benefit? That maybe they're going to see this time as more valuable if it shows that their growth and achievement's going to be meaningfully moved?
Absolutely. So, every site where we have a 21st Century program has a curriculum coordinator who is a staff member in the building who works with the daytime teachers and the after-school program folks. And in this particular add-on program, Dr. Carol Kraft is a science teacher at RISA who is working with Dr. Shu from NIU to craft that, and they will be doing their own research, aligning Illinois Science Assessment Standards with what is being taught in this portable Makerspace to check on students' self-efficacy around these standards and as well as what they're doing on interim progress marks.
Any other board comments or, Mr. Connor?
Yep. One thing I would note for the public is you really should read this line item because even though it's a small amount that we're doing tonight, it does list some rather large pieces of the Title I, 2.243 Middle Schools, and it's got, just, you know, talking about partnerships, Rockford Park District for RISA, McIntosh, Kennedy, Lewis-Lehman, Westview, and Ellis, at almost $328,000. I mean, I won't rattle all the numbers, but I think it's very important to emphasize how these funds are applied and that they are applied at really some of the neediest schools, and this is direct support. So, I would encourage the public to look at this, to see how these dollars are allocated in for what schools, because it's very important. So, I appreciate the work being done.
Can I do a shout-out for our community partners? Those, they really work hard as supporting our students and demonstrating that we're stronger together when we work for them.
Thank you. Okay, this will be presented at our November 27th board meeting for a vote. Our next new business item, Ms. Detman, is going to present Board Policy 6300: Instruction Graduation Requirements.
I will actually defer.
Or it might be a team effort.
Yes, I will actually defer to Carrie.
Carrie's here.
Hello. Good evening. So, yes, we are bringing to you an update to 6.300 for our graduation requirements. Because we have undergone our curriculum realignment process, and we have our new curriculum rolling out, especially new course sequences in math and science and social science, we wanted to make sure that our graduation requirement chart reflected that. And so you'll see in the high school diploma section, we added language that states that it follows the approved course sequence. And then for science, and for science, we made sure we added, we kept the language around physical science and life science content because that comes from the state, as well as mathematics, keeping the language around algebra and geometry content because that comes from the state. So that's really the updates that we're bringing.
Any questions for Carrie? All right, thank you. So we'll come for a vote at our November 27th board meeting. I've decided to add one other new item on the agenda, so bear with me for a minute. I want all board members, and Mr. Deal, where do you go? Fred?
Pretty big.
Could you hang around for a second? I might, you might have some thoughts on this.
I want to talk about the Illinois Association of School Board is having their conference this weekend, and on Saturday, there is a delegation assembly where resolutions will be voted on. And I want all board members to know that if you didn't read your packet that you got in the mail in September, that there is a pretty important resolution on the floor for Saturday, and that's about, I'm going to read it to you, okay? It says, "Be it resolved that the Illinois Association of School Boards shall support and advocate for legislation which provides local school boards the option of developing student safety and protection plans, which may include administrators, faculty, and other staff who have completed a state-approved training course above and beyond concealed carry training, who have passed the multiple background checks and qualifications required for a concealed carry license, or have a current concealed carry license issued under the Law Enforcement Officer Safety Act. Only staff who fulfill all requirements listed would be eligible as an active and armed part of the student safety and protection plan upon being granted board approval." So what this is basically saying is that school boards could have the, could option in, may or may not decide to arm teachers and staff at our school buildings. And you don't have to, but this would allow that to happen. And it is my opinion that that's not a really good idea. I don't support that idea. And I have talked with Dr. Jarrett, I've talked with a few school board members, I think I've had a conversation with Dawn maybe a while back about this or whatever, but, and Fred certainly is the man in charge of our school safety program, but we, I just want everyone to know in the public that we have armed school liaison officers in all of our middle and secondary and high schools, and it concerns me greatly that this would pass. Now, some of the argument is that in the state of Illinois, anybody want to guess how many school districts there are in Illinois?
700.
852. There's 852 school districts in the state of Illinois. Some of those school districts have a lot of space between their buildings, especially in the rural areas, so that I think this push is really coming from some of the rural districts who have an issue where their buildings might be 20, 30 miles apart or whatever, and the response time of the police and emergency response people might be at least a half an hour before someone could get there. And so maybe should we arm teachers in the case of an active shooter incident or whatever? So, I just want to go on record that I do not support this, and I'm interested in hearing any comments from any other board member, or the REA leadership, or our chief of safety, or our superintendent. So, anybody want to chime in on that?
I don't support it.
Okay, okay, thank you. Dawn is here.
I do not support this. It is not our job to be bringing guns into schools. It is our job to make sure that the schools are safe, and it is not appropriate to have arming teachers. It's just not appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Segal? I do not support it as far as 205 goes, or really for any urban school district. I can certainly see reasons for having it, particularly in these rural school districts. I hope that they can, if they do implement it, they can do it with tremendous fidelity. I just see so many vulnerabilities in introducing guns to the school environment beyond our armed liaisons. But I guess I'll also take this opportunity to remind the community that Rockford Public Schools has proven to be a very safe environment, really. Not only have we, you know, in the last seven years, dropped arrests, suspensions, expulsions, in the history of District 205, we have not had a single school shooting. Only one in Rockford. I think that speaks volumes for itself.
Thank you. Mr. Goddard?
So, we have the pleasure tonight of having a group of students from social studies classes at Auburn High School with us for school assignment.
Okay. And I can tell you, they've been actively engaged, and I have Michael. Okay. Who I heard say, he wanted to speak. All righty, very good. So here's Michael from Auburn High School. Okay, Michael, thank you for being here.
Oh. Do I got Lena? I'm being for real.
Okay.
Um, hello, everybody.
Hi.
My name is Michael, like he already said, and I go to Auburn High School, and me personally feeling about this issue is that I personally wouldn't feel safe in this situation. I can't speak for every student that's out there, but I just personally wouldn't feel good in this situation because I feel like a lot that's going on in today's society with different type of ways of, how should I say, like, everybody has a bad day. We all know this, like, so I personally wouldn't be feel safe, like, me personally, if I go into a classroom and teacher's having a bad day, and like, a little argument breaks out in between students and now someone's drawing a weapon. Or, or something's going on in the hallways, people yelling, screaming, so they think there's a different situation going on, and so they draw a weapon. I personally wouldn't feel safe in this situation, and, you know, not everyone is exactly trained in special type of weapons, especially when it comes to guns and different type of stuff like that. So I feel like personally, like, if a teacher was in that situation, it might cause them to be nervous or thinking rationally about the situation, and it could cause them to just shoot blankly into a crowd, which can cause a lot more problems to a basic fight, per se. So, that's just my take on it.
Thank you.
I really want to bring that out. Just, thank you.
Appreciate you bringing it up.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I would also just want to add that both Mr. Segal and I have been contacted by community parent members of our district on this issue, that this vote is happening this weekend, and they wanted to know how we were going to vote, and they are absolutely opposed to this, so just wanted you to be aware. That's why I brought it to everyone's attention.
Mr. Deal?
I too am not in favor.
Okay, good, all right, thank you. Okay. Okay. Anybody else that want to make a comment? Sure. An uncomfortable thing to think about, but we believe that our school district has done a really good job of keeping our buildings safe, and we want to keep it that way, so...
So...
No, no. Yes.
We don't have anybody there that will be voting this weekend.
We don't.
Correct.
Unless someone wants to drive in. It's 10:30 on Saturday morning at the Hyatt in downtown Chicago.
And it is not binding to all school districts?
Nope. It is not binding, no.
So...
I will be there and I will...
Yeah, the fortunate thing is, is that we will do what's right for our district.
Sure.
So, at least it's not anything that's binding for us to do, anything we don't want to do.
I do expect this is going to get some press, and at le, I'm sure it will in Chicago, for sure, because that's where the vote's going to be held or whatever, but throughout the state as well. So, Mr. Dotson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Not that I want to prolong this topic, but just a reminder to the board for our objective key results that we all have. One of mine, I have five of them, one of mine is what we refer to as the secret shopper, meaning where, working with Mr. Deal, we send someone who works for Permar into school buildings to see if they can penetrate the building without being detected, and so far, Fred, we've done three of those? How many? Five? We've done five. So, at our, I think at our board retreat, we will share that information with the board around this topic, just about how that's going and how that's, how that operation is functioning in terms of our readiness in the event that something like that happens. So, just wanted to add that, that we are monitoring that, and we have something that we're utilizing to address that.
Thank you, sir. Okay. If there are no further comments or agenda recommendations by the board, I'll take a motion and a second to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Second by Mr. Segal. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, we are adjourned at 7:56.